Okay. All right, we'll call the City of Belvidere Committee of the Hole for October 11th, 2021 order. The clerk will call the rule, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal is absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we have any public comment.
No.
We do not have public forum. We'll go to reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, Public Works, Unfinished Business. Mr. Anderson substituting for Mr. Anderson. Do you have anything you wanted under unfinished business?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Under public, item two, Public Works, New Business. Any update, Danny? I don't know, I think what we have on the agenda is probably...
I do have an update sheet here.
Okay.
The Street Department Fall Branch Pickup Program will begin next Monday, 18th, on the southeast side. Southwest side will be the week of 20, October 25th. Northwest side will be the week of November 1st, and the northeast side will be the week of November 8th. Leaf collection will begin on the south side of the river on the week of November 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, Scanner/Printer Replacement. So we have a memo in the packet, item 2B, a memo in your packet regarding the large-format Gina, did you have anything you would like to add on that?
Just that me and Brent are going to go with Grant's recommendation. He's much more familiar with this kind of equipment, being into computers himself, and he spent quite a bit of time researching all of them, and between the multiple, was it four line items, we can get it covered. I will say, just for those that don't know the history of the plotter scanner, or what one is, it's the things that we can print off full-size blueprints, scanner subdivision plaits, so it's a full-size copier-printer. We had one for the county, and when the department split, we got to keep it in exchange for me scanning plaits for the clerk's office, because they were hiring a company to scan theirs, and the company was actually bringing them back damaged. So, the agreement we had was that we wouldn't have to buy the county out of that piece of equipment in exchange for me scanning their plaits. Shortly after that, the machine completely broke down, and it was so old, they didn't even make parts for it anymore. So since it was not a budgeted item, I went and got a used one, and it has been a headache ever since. The scanning capabilities of it is fantastic, the printing capabilities of it, it is constantly having printhead issues, constantly running out of paper, because of all the paper we waste on the printhead issues. It at times will take me about 45 minutes just to print one sheet, and Kip and Danny can attest, I'm usually kicking it and not very friendly by the end of the day, after dealing with it and wasting way too much staff time on it. So we decided it was time to get a new one that wouldn't waste so much staff time on it. So, and between, like I said, between the four line items, between revenues higher than anticipated and expenses lower than anticipated, we had the free money.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion then to approve the proposal for West Alice Blue for the purchase of a Canon TX4100 MFP Z36 Large Format Color Scanner/Printer at a cost of $8,700, and the cost will be split between the following departments. Planning Department, three grand; Water Department, 2,500; Sewer Department, 2,500; Engineering Department, 700. This includes a one-year warranty, delivery, installation, and training. Could I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions for Gina or whoever else? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Gina, this scanner has the ability to digitize and take something that size and make it this size?
Yep, and so for instance, when you, I know it's been a while, but when there's subdivision plaits that you guys vote on, and then it shrunk down to be part of the packet, it's because I've scanned the full-size one and turned into a PDF and they can print it off any size I want. It's very useful with FOIA's. FOIA'd plaits, FOIA'd old site plans, you know, we can scan it and then get it on a thumb drive or small enough to email it. Thanks.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. What's the life expectancy on a scanner/printer like this?
I'm going to default to Grant on that. I don't know too much about the technical stuff. Like I said, I trusted his judgment on the searching. I do know the one we originally had on the county was probably 10 years. The used one we bought was probably about 12 years old when we got it. So it's not a yearly, I mean, it'll last us probably about 10 years, especially newer ones that they make the parts for, you know, obviously they're going to last longer than used ones where you're already kind of in that nifty range.
Thank you.
Okay, and just to be clear, we had four proposals on this. One for $9,795, one for $10,495, one for $10,976, and this one for $8,700. So this is a little bid, so. Hearing no other questions, so we have a motion and a second then to approve the purchase of the Canon TX4100 Large Format Color Scanner at a cost of $8,700. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Item C, Wastewater Treatment Plant Lab Water System Upgrade. The memo in your packet dated October 5th from Brent to the City Council and myself talks about the water system, the current lab water system that is required for daily sample testing, needs to be replaced, and the following proposals were received. With that being said, I would ask for a motion to recommend approval of the proposal from Total Water Treatment Systems in the amount of $7,859 for a new water purification system for the wastewater treatment lab. This equipment will be paid for from line item number 61-5-820-6010. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Porter. And again, we had two bids on this, one bid being for $10,097 and this low bid of $7,859. Any questions? Any questions for Danny? Alderman Snow?
So, out of curiosity, when you're standing in front of the sewer facility, is this the stuff that's over in the, I'm going to call it the administration building, and where the lab and all that? Okay, just curious, where exactly it was going for that?
Any other questions for Danny? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the Total Water Treatment System purchase in the amount of $7,859 for the wastewater treatment plant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item 2D, Appleton Force Main Change Order Number One. There's a memo in your packet dated October 5th from Director Anderson regarding the Appleton Force Main Extension. I would, in order to start off discussion on this, I would ask for a motion approval of the change order for number one, Sega Ag, in the amount of $143,000 for the Appleton Force Main Project. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Fund, number 06-08. Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman McGee. Okay, any questions? Any discussion regarding this? Alderman Snow?
So at this point, that work's already been done, so it's a true change order that's already been implemented, and we, lack of another term, we don't really have a choice other than to pay for it, or is this something they've stopped and they need to do at this point?
The work is done. Did you say approved change order? No. Nothing has been approved.
No, I mean, we need to approve it, but regardless, if they'd already done the work, we're on the hook to pay for it, so, okay.
It has not been completed, the work.
No, the pipe, we all know that we had a problem before out there. This pipe is from the sewer plant to the VFW, both ends are ready to be tied in to their prospective tie-in locations. That's what is waiting.
Alderman Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I thought the whole reason that we went with this second company, you know, I thought they were aware of all of the problems, so I'm a bit hesitant on this. And again, the work's already done. Again, this is like the mural thing, why do we keep doing this backwards?
Well, I think that's a good point. If I might add, so you're right, whenever this work was originally bid at, I believe it was 384,000, was that the original, the Apollo bid that, when I, is that right?
It's right, it's all right, yeah.
Yeah. So, and then they had issues with that, being able to make that bore, and actually shortly after I took office, that was already in the works, and then shortly after I took office, that bond was called in, and they weren't able to do that work. They'd asked for a change order as well, for a sizable amount, I believe it may have been more than the bid itself, the initial bid, for a change order, and then here we are. So you are correct, Alderman Burton. When I came in, I had asked to make sure that that work was to be identified, that the previous individuals that tried to make that bore understood that we had issues out there and what they were, and it was my understanding that they were aware of it, and, you know, they were told, and they were aware of it, so. But it still doesn't prevent me from bringing this to the council. This is, this is something that we're at now, and Mr. Anderson, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
I was going to comment that, yes, they followed the same route as the first contract. First contractor attempted, and they hit the cobbles, they got to the river by the waterfall there. They couldn't go any farther, they got stuck, they backed it out, put a new head on, went back through the same pilot hole, they went 28 feet before they actually struck immovable object, which we think is probably limestone. It probably came up in the river where no borings were ever been able to be taken there, so it's, they hit that obstruction, they pulled the head out, it was totally annihilated. They had told our guy in the, one of our guys from the sewer plant that the least amount he's ever got out of one of those had is 1,500 feet. So they brought it back. That was on Friday before Labor Day, the 3rd, I believe, regrouped and decided to go to Colorado, that the subcontractor boring for Sega was out of Colorado. Hopped in his truck, went to Colorado, and got a rockhead, and they came back and decided to go down through the limestone layer, and that's the route they took, and that's where they came up, there by the VFW, and I think total is 700 feet in the solid rock, is what they bored. And that's what they're asking for, the extra money, for that 700 feet of the extra hard
Alderwoman Freeman and Alderman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. So this has already been drilled and done, correct? So I think I have a question for Attorney Drellah. If we don't pay this, what does that, where is that going to leave the city as far as, are they going to sue us?
I don't know as far as what they will do, as far as the lawsuit goes. Couple of caveats out there. I don't recall if this was bid before or after Mayor Morris took office, the Apollo settlement was done last fall, as you'll recover, or as you recall. Yes, Sega was aware of the previous contractor and their issues. I know that because they've mentioned that in conversations with us. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a geologist. It appears that the obstruction that Sega ran into is different than what Apollo did. Apollo ran into Kabul, weren't able to get through it, switched their heads to what's called an air hammer, and then lost control of the head. It wasn't that they couldn't push through, they just lost control. Remember, that's why they ended up all seismant, couldn't control, there's worries about natural gas and all those kinds of issues. Significantly different than what Sega ran into. They ran into somehow a slightly different area, the bedrock of the river. So, yes, they were aware, they had access to all the borings, they had access to all the data that every other contractor that bid the project bid also had. Interestingly, they were the lowest bidder by far on the project. In fact, if you add in the change order, I believe they're still lower than the other bidders. My guess is they took a look at what happened in the last drill, the other bidders, took a look at the way we drafted the contract and said, "We're just going to bid really high, because we see this as being dangerous, a risk." And Sega bid lower, because they probably didn't see the same risk, and they kind of struck out on that. So what does that leave us now? Yes, they did the work. They did the work without the approved change order. That is in contravention to the agreement that we have with them. At the same time, they did give us prompt notice, when I say us, the engineer and public works, they did give prompt notice of what they saw as the changed circumstances underground, that they hit the bedrock, and they wanted to get the change order approved. We hadn't brought it to the council yet. One of the issues they ran into was time. As Danny said, the subcontract they used was from Colorado, and their billing, ka-ching, 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 the entire time they're on site, and I guess they decided that if they had to wait two to four weeks to get the City Council to approve a change order, that's two to four weeks these guys are sitting around doing nothing, and potentially paying them, and if they released them onto their next job, they might not have gotten back here in time. So they made the election to go forward, and when I say they being Sega, to get the hole drilled and essentially ask for help later on. So that's why it was done early, without the council approval. I'm presuming on their part why they did it that way, but it makes logical sense. The amounts that they're asking for again are actually way lower than what Apollo wanted to do to finish the project, do you recall? And I think it's still lower than the second lowest bid on this bidding of the project. Now, as far as what will happen if we don't pay it? Yes, they could sue us. If we don't pay it, what will probably happen, and I don't want to get into too much discussion on it, because if it ends up in litigation, I don't want to tip our hand on TV for them here. But if we were refused to pay, they'd probably refuse to finish, at which point we would call the bond, and we'll be arguing with the bond company with them for the next six months to a year and a half, trying to figure out how much we owe, if anything, how much do they owe, and how do we finish this project? And in the meantime, we won't have the project done. We may prevail ultimately. The way I drafted this contract, there's a provision in the contract that says, contractor, you're on the, you're assuming the risk for everything, because we knew about what happened in the past. So ultimately, we may prevail, but that doesn't mean the project's done, we'll still have to hire somebody to go out and do it.
Alderwoman Freeman, continue.
Thank you. So this is ready to be connected at either end. Is this payment holding that up?
I can't answer that. I would assume so.
I think he's bringing a different crew to do the tie-in, it's a totally different process than the boring. He will do this himself, meaning Sega Ag, the general, and it's two different processes. But I would think, yeah, it's holding it up.
They may be waiting to see what happens, I don't know. They have not said they would not finish the project. Wouldn't be surprised if they didn't, but they've not said that.
And the one thing that I might add is, there's a few questions out there that I have. I think Brent probably would be the most foremost expert to answer those. He won't be back until next Monday, so I was hoping that we could go ahead and send this to the council, give you a chance to look at it. I do believe that in regards to the question that Alderwoman Freeman asked, there is a completion date on that contract, and that is expired. So with that being said, why that's not, why they're not out there and to complete that is up to everybody to decide on theirself. But I would ask to keep it moving forward, I'm not asking anybody, obviously this is just the committee, there's other questions out there that I think the council should hear. I don't think they're able to be answered here tonight, but I do believe we'll get an answer, and then the council can decide accordingly, based upon those. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Sega Ag, the contractor, is available to be here for the next meeting, as will, I believe, Mr. Bungee from CES, is that correct, Mike? Do you know that? I think, yeah, I think next meeting, Sega, the engineer and Brent will all be here.
Yeah, I would also, before we take the vote out, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
And on that note, if we could get the latest and greatest copies of the contract and all the information, and also the original bids, so we just, just for numbers sake, be able to look at them.
And I think that's a good point, and that's what I wanted the council to see, I wanted them to see the contract, I wanted them to take a look at the fine print, and I wanted them to see the previous bids, because quite frankly, if, and I know this happens, I'm not saying this happens, this happened in this case, however, I do know that a lot of times after bids with, I can think of some other governmental projects that have been done and change orders are, seem to be a bad habit, not saying that's it in this case, however, it's one way of bidding on a project and then change as you go, and myself, I'm not convinced that that's justified, so. We'll get everything to the council, and we'll be able to make up our mind. How's that? Alderman Snow?
And maybe this be more toward your end or the engineers, but if we could get some kind of illustration as to, you know, some kind of diagram other than, you know, if we were trying to go under the river, you know, where exactly, generically speaking, some kind of illustration would be good, potentially, just tossing that out there.
Okay, so with that being said, I would entertain a motion then. One thing I don't want to do is I, I don't want to hold the individual, the company up, I don't want them to be waiting on us. I do want us to be waiting on the correct information, but if we can get it to next Monday night, and we'll have all the individuals here, have the information provided, and then we'll be able to address it then. So if I could get an approval of the change order from Sega Ag in the amount of $143,000 for the Appleton Force Main Project, and the work will be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Fund, number 06-08, at least to get it, move it, continue moving it on, if I could get a motion to that effect.
Sorry, I think I have a motion, a second?
Oh, we do? Okay, who was that, Snow? Oh, wonderful, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we have the Leith Demolition Change Order Number One, which is a lot less significant. You'll see the memo in your packet regarding that. There was a one-story addition at the west end of the Leith Building, the asbestos had to be removed from that section as part of the building that was actually structurally safe to do so. The amount is $7,875 on that change. I would ask for approval of the change order request from Packard Excavating in the amount of $7,875 for the additional asbestos abatement required for the Leith Building demolition, and this work will be paid for from line item number 41-5-110-7900. I get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion regarding that? Danny, I don't know if you had any comments regarding that, or if I covered it, or... Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, this work has already been done, so we're kind of doing it backwards again. Is that, is that because it's a four-week turnover thing, and it just holds everything up if they just don't go ahead and do it, and then bring it to the council afterwards? Is that why?
Basically, yes. I believe this, tell me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I don't believe they, they didn't know about this particular asbestos until they uncovered it, and that's why they're coming at, you know, coming at us now for this, which is justified.
That's correct. They went through the, all the, all the companies that bid, bid the removal of the Leith Building went through the big building, the one they knew they were going to have to demo, the small building, they didn't go through that, none of them went through there until they, and then when they went through, they realized there was a small amount of asbestos that was in that building. It had to be remediated anyhow as part of the removal, there was no way around it, you can't tear it down without removing it, so the abatement was $7,875, so they started there and moved east to demo the whole building in its entirety, so. Alderman Snow?
And is this something that they should have evaluated at bid stage, so that wouldn't be a big surprise?
There was no way they could get to that portion of the building, the way the existing structure was to the east of that, there was no access into there, so there was no way
Any other? Alderman Burton?
Thanks again, Mayor. So I guess I feel exactly the same about this change order as I do about the last one, number one, that it's already been done, and then number two, you know, I had specifically asked... And then number two, you know, I had specifically asked, um, why we weren't going to use the gentleman from Ohio that would do it for free. And then I asked if it was because of the asbestos. And the answer was yes, and, um, here we are paying for more asbestos removal.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the abatement for the asbestos was a known quantity inside the building, uh, that was open. I think the building to the west was my understanding. They couldn't see everything that was within that structure. So, uh, and the, that is correct. I was, uh, told that, uh, uh, there, there was nobody that was aware that, uh, there was asbestos in the, in this building. So once they came and did a asbestos, um, investigation into that, they found it, uh, essentially between the floors. And they had, uh, they had to dig around to find it, but once they found it, uh, then it changed it. Somebody who would have had to remove it supposedly for no cost would have had a tremendous expense to be able to remove that because you just can't take it to the dump. It goes a special way. It's removed a special way. It's, uh, it's hauled a special way and it's, um, it is taken to the dump and placed in a special area. So, um, I think, I don't know how serious, um, you know, I never did have a, have anybody tell me that they would take it for free. I never did have that. I'd heard about that, but I was never quite, uh, there was never any contract. I'd never seen it anything in writing. And I'd said it before that, uh, I was told when I had come in to office to, to, uh, remove this building would be about three-quarters of a million dollars. And, uh, so we did it. Uh, the council got it done for $304,000 plus the $7,875 in unknown abatement. So roughly, what, 3,000, uh, 312,000? So that's where we are. They would have had to, regardless, we would have had, uh, if we would have stopped, uh, we really didn't want to stop with any abatement, uh, or any demo. We wanted that building taken down. Once, uh, that building was started, uh, there was no question that it was unsafe before we even started. It was still a safety issue. So the way I looked at it was for the 12 grand, um, for the $12,000 that it did run over. Uh, those were unseen costs and I think they were legitimate, but, um, here we are. Alderman Porter?
I guess I would have one question. I don't know if you can answer this or not, but when these companies bid these jobs like this, don't they add a certain percentage for like contingency plans in case there is some kind of a problem or they bid it to exactly what they think it's going to be?
I think each contractor does it a little bit differently. I know, uh, it's not uncommon for somebody to add in a 10% or so kind of contingency amount. Um, not always, they're trying to win a contract, they're trying to win a bid and they're going to sharpen their pencils to try and win that bid. Um, and I understand the, the concern and the frustration with the work's done and now he wants to approve payment. I get that. One of the problems you run into with any kind of construction contract, and, and I've seen it in other, granted, it was 18 years ago, I was representing the municipalities, but I've seen it before. You get into a construction contract or demolition contract like this, you've got your contractor unseen, I mean, you may guys may have stopped by the Leith building and saw this spraying the water down there, they had that big, uh, crane knocking the building down and things like that. And they're spending a lot of money on rental, having that equipment there and the people there. And unfortunately, it takes us anywhere between two and four weeks to approve a change order, just by the nature of our meeting cycles. What a lot of communities do is they'll approve or grant authority to the administration to approve change orders up to a certain percentage of contracts or up to a certain amount, um, on the front end. And granted, that, it really is the same things you're doing here because you're approving retro or you're giving somebody else the authority to approve it upfront. Um, but I can tell you, at least with things like, uh, the Leith building, I can't say this is what happened with Sega, but the Leith building, the administration knew about it ahead of time. Um, and of course, uh, we knew why it was there. So, um, it's something you may want to consider in the future because quite frankly, when you're in the middle of a construction project, oftentimes because of the cost of waiting, you can't necessarily wait for a city council approval.
I think also you want to keep into, um, perspective, I guess, that, um, the second bid on that property removal, uh, which would have been the same abatement issue, was $384,000, I believe, was the second, is that right? Second highest bid, second, second lowest bid. And then the third one was $700,000. So we still come in, um, quite a bit less, but I agree with Alderman Burden, you'd like to be able to know all those intangibles ahead of time, but in this case, those were hidden in that, uh, west end structure. And, uh, as soon as they were uncovered, it really didn't matter. We were, we were on our way to demoing that and it was the right thing to do and we had to, uh, we didn't want to hold up. So for $7,875, here we are. Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion in a second then to, uh, recommend the approval of the change order request in the amount of $7,875 for the asbestos abatement, uh, required for the Leith building demolition. This will be paid for from line item number 41-5-110-7900. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Motion passed. Uh, item 2F, well number five update, Danny? Uh, you want to enlighten us?
Thank you. I thought I was loud enough without that thing. Kahoye Pump Service has completed the airlift in a well five. All the sediment buildup in the well has been removed. They've also completed their inspection of the pump and motor. Excessive wear in the pump will require replacement. Uh, based on pumping history of the well, we believe lowering the GPM output of this well from 800 to 550 gallons per minute will increase the durability of this well. The pump can be reduced from nine stages to four and the motor can be reduced from 100 horsepower to 75 horsepower. Recommend approval of Kahoye's bid of $34,952 even, uh, well number five, and it'll be paid for from the water depreciation account, number 04-09.
Okay. Uh, could I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, Alderman Snow?
So, and Danny, hopefully you can answer this. I thought well number five was suspect to having the, um, chemical issue, um, that plastic stuff. Yeah.
I'm only well, well for having the PFAS issue.
That's my understanding that by making the changes with the, um, the size of the pump, and Alderman Stevens, you probably know more about this by far than I do, but, and also the amount that they're going to be pumping out of that, uh, well that we will get longevity out of it.
Yeah, I've been looking at the pictures and there's a lot of wear in there on this thing. But like you said, with the less gallons per minute, you're going to be sucking up less sand. Good as sandstone, it's drilled into St. Peters and it's just over the years, it's filled up bottom, so...
So hopefully this all will give us some, uh, life, uh, some more life on well number five. We certainly need a little bit of good luck, uh, with the other wells, uh, three and four and then, uh, that we have. So we'd like to get this one online as quick as we can. I think it's feasible. Alderman Snow?
And Danny, where is number five located in the city?
It's over on, uh, Fifth Street between Pearl and Union.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Danny, how long has this well been offline? And, um, you know, we've been a little bit throwing around the idea of a new well 11. Will this well then still be used if we end up, um, making a new well?
Correct. And to your question offline, several months it's been offline, we've had problems, like Clayton mentioned, with the sand. We've been pumping a lot of sand through there and, uh, it's been failing for a couple of years. Three and four are likely never to be used again. So, yeah, this will be, well, 11 will replace three and four. Five, which is still need in that area town.
I think, uh, the, it's pretty appealing to be able to have, if we can get this, uh, up and running and get it, uh, you know, the amount of, uh, gallons per minute that it'll be pumping is adequate, even though it's reduced. And, uh, if we can buy some time out of it, that would seem to be the most efficient way to, way to go with it. So what, what they say, uh, if we have to, um, if we have to, um, drill for a new well number 11, that's millions, right?
It will be by the time we get done with the well itself, the drilling and then the appurtenances that go with the building, the iron filter and such, it's a lot like well 10. I don't exactly remember where that total finally came in at.
So, um, anyhow, any other questions regarding well number five? Okay. Hearing none, uh, recommend the approval for the proposal from Kahoye Pump Service in the amount of $34,952 for the new pump and motor at well number five. This work will be paid for from the water depreciation account, number 04-09. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. And, uh, we have a memo from Director of Public Works Anderson, Brent Anderson, dated 10/7, uh, for bucket truck replacement. Danny?
I'm going to read from the memo you have. The boom on our 2005 Ford F-750 bucket truck has a split in it and needs to be replaced. I believe you have pictures of it. Uh, the replacement cost is estimated to be $28,107.59. The current street department budget includes $155,000 for the replacement of our 1988 Mack utility truck. Given the age of the bucket, uh, set bucket assembly and the cost to repair it, we would propose to replace the 1988 Mack with a 2005 chassis that has a bucket on it now and purchase a replacement bucket truck with that 155. Uh, we've been searching for a new or like new used truck and we believe we can find a suitable bucket truck or a suitable replacement for that truck for the 155 that is budgeted. In the likelihood that we need to purchase a used truck, I would recommend waiving the bidding requirement of section 2-700 of the Belvedere Code. Therefore, I would recommend the following motions. Motion one, waive the competitive proposal process of section 2-700 of the Belvedere Code with respect to the purchase of a bucket truck. Motion two will be motion to authorize Public Works Department to purchase a bucket truck for the street department at a cost not to exceed the $155,000 budgeted. This truck will be paid for from line item number 41-5752-8300.
All right. So basically you're going to use the, uh, the chassis off of the, uh, 2005 truck to replace the older truck and make, uh, get some service out of that, uh, in that, in that regard and then go after, um, hopefully a bucket truck. Are they hard to find?
They are. I have one located in Oklahoma and I'm trying like heck to get it back here a little closer to take a look at it. Uh, and that is going to come in under that price range, but, um, still awaiting more information in that particular unit.
Yeah.
And the, another problem is, and you talk about, Marshall was talking about the, the process of bidding, is by the time we find a truck, it'll be gone by the time we have to wait a month to get it approved through the council. And that's why we're trying to go this route, not to exceed the 155.
Okay. Uh, so before we get too far, we really need a motion, uh, probably a motion on the floor, at least get a motion for discussion. So in motion number one, motion to waive the competitive proposals, uh, process of section 2-700 of the Belvedere Code with respect to the purchase of a bucket truck. Could we get that motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. And, uh, any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman, did you have a question?
It was, it was on motion two.
Uh, okay. Well, we have a motion then, uh, in a second. Any other questions regarding that? To waive the, uh, competitive, uh, proposal process? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, thank you. And motion number two, um, we have a motion to that effect. And I would assume then that question, you have all kinds of questions. Motion to authorize the Public Works to, Works to purchase the bucket truck, uh, for the street department at a cost not to exceed $155,000 budgeted. This truck will be paid for from line item number 41-5-752-8300. A motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Alderman Porter?
Okay. I have a question here. It says the replacement cost is $28,107. And then the next paragraph down says, given the age of the bucket assembly and the cost to repair it. Now I'm wondering about repair. Is there any way that we could weld this, uh, and fix it that way or is that just not possible?
Uh, no. That is absolutely, I don't know, to do anything like that to this. You'd have to replace the entire assembly because it's got to be, what is the word? We have this truck inspected yearly. It has to be inspected for the, uh, electrical, uh, I just can't think of the word, but it's inspected yearly and...
OSHA?
Uh, yeah, that and make sure it's insulated properly.
Thank you, Mayor. So Danny, what exactly is a bucket truck? And how are we going to take the bucket off of the old truck, the Mack, and then put it on this other chassis?
The bucket assembly on the, on the Ford, the 16-year-old truck would just be scrapped. The, that box and the bucket and the hydraulic system would go bye-bye. We would put a flatbed of some sort on that truck, which the 88 Mack has a flatbed on it, kind of an all-purpose truck. And, um, basically just replace that. It's just buying time by doing that. And the bucket truck is the truck that we do all our elevated work on streetlights, uh, tree trimming, tree removal, uh, traffic signals, banners, you name it, we need it. And right now we are leasing a, on a monthly basis, a man lift that is really quite a pain to get around town with.
Okay. Thank you.
So essentially, um, that, that bucket on that truck on the 2005 is, is junk. And, uh, that one will be scrapped and, um, get a new bucket truck for the $155,000 budgeted. And then the 2005, uh, Ford truck that has the junk bucket on the truck will be replacing the 1988 Mack. And, uh, so that's kind of how it'll work.
That's Brent being thrifty.
So we have a motion in a second on the, on the floor. Any other questions? Any discussion? Any comments? Any heartburn? Okay. All right. Hearing none, um, motion to authorize the Public Works to purch, purchase a bucket truck for the street department at a cost not to exceed the $155,000 budgeted. This truck will be paid for from line item 41-5-752-8300. All those in favor, please... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Item number three, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Item four, building, planning, zoning, planning, zoning department update, Gina?
So for September, I have the two special uses in the variance. For October, it's the flagpole text amendment. November is an annexation and a rezoning for a house. I guarantee you, everyone in this room already thinks this house is in the city. It is completely surrounded. It's a little island of one house in the county. So having it annexed and rezone is not anticipated to be a big deal at all. I am talking to several people that claim they're gonna be submitting applications tomorrow, so November could be crazy. But I say this every month, and then they don't move forward. So one of these days, we're gonna have a month with like a thousand cases. But it is what it is. Zoning verification letters are still very popular. Properties are not staying on the market very long at all. There is a very large auction coming up, dealing with several of the residential properties off of Distillery Shaw Road and some industrial property off of Crosslink. This particular auctioneer is really doing his due diligence, which I love, because it's always a pain when someone buys a property on a back-tax sale or an auction, assuming they're getting some cheap land for a great idea, and then I have to tell them that they bought a retention pond, you know? So he's been in the office quite a bit, doing his due diligence, knowing they're in the enterprise zone, what the plaque calls for, the conservation district access, all kinds of stuff. So I was actually pretty excited to work with him this month. Historic Preservation's been busy. Their awards banquet is this Thursday, and they're just kicking around some ideas about community outreach efforts they could be doing. Hometown Christmas is in full swing, so Buchanan Street Shores ended, and Hometown Christmas has begun. So we got some great ideas this year for that. And Papa Grove has some cases moving forward. And again, they have about six applications that are floating around out there, just waiting for one of them to actually submit. But otherwise, that is the biggest thing. We are starting to get some of the facade grant applicants that you approved are submitting for reimbursement, so those projects are getting completed, which is nice to see.
Okay, any questions for Gina? All right, thank you, Gina. Four B, item, Building Department Update, Kip?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of September, as far as property maintenance, we have forty-five cases ongoing. We've closed twelve. For Building Department revenues, we issued one hundred and twenty-eight permits for a value of construction just under four million dollars. Some of the highlights, fifteen single-family homes, thirteen commercial permits. I can release that there's an AT&T being built out by Rosati's and a couple of tenant build-outs. Next is a dollar double laundromat out by Daywans. So, other than that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, no questions, thank you, Kip. All right, item five, other. So, A, illegal dumping. It had been brought to my attention numerous times regarding individuals who feel that they have a right to march debris, garbage, furniture, you name it, and they bring it out to the curb, and then they leave it, and then the city ends up having to go and clean it up. So I thought that we should have something that we would be able to have a little bit of effect on individuals that do that, because since I've been in office, I've probably had four or five calls, and I went out myself and looked at them, and sure enough, not only on the premises, but out in the curb, out in the right-of-way, and even out in the street. And I've had to have the Public Works Department go over there, because I'm just like anybody else here in this room. We take care of our property, but when we have individuals that don't, we would like that property picked up. We don't wanna see that garbage on the street, or on the sidewalk, or in the right-of-way. And another thing, it promotes animals. You have one of the properties that I personally went out on, there were raccoons and skunks that were in the garbage that was on the ground. So we can do better than that, and I think this is a shot at it, and I'll turn it over to the city attorney to make some comments on it.
So of course, it already is illegal to dump garbage, refuge on public property in the city. And what we're really talking about with respect to these modifications, and just as I'm sitting here, reading this as we're getting to this topic, I have another one, another change I may wanna make. But what we're really talking about is the area in the terrace, that area basically between the city's paved right-of-way and the property line of the adjacent property. Usually, most areas of the city, that's the area between the sidewalk and the right-of-way, but obviously, there's areas that dump sidewalks, and it's the territory that's grass that they don't own, we own, and they cut the grass, what have you. And so we're talking about people dumping garbage in that area, but it could also be the park, it could be an alley, what have you. And the problem we have is while it's illegal to dump in there, usually, we don't see who does the dumping. Somebody comes along, and obviously, usually, it might be the landowner, or it might be a tenant that is moving out and dumps a whole bunch of crud that they don't wanna move in that right-of-way and takes off. But unless somebody actually sees them doing the dumping, how do you prove that they did the dumping? And it always, so it comes down to a proof problem in court. What this ordinance's draft attempts to do, and something Chicago did, not specifically with this issue, but dealing with dumpsters, analogous type of ordinance though, is to create a presumption that if garbage, and I'm not talking about candy wrappers, what have you, that's what I mean by de minimis in that ordinance. I'm talking bed springs, mattresses, furniture, refrigerators, TVs, that kind of thing. If that's dumped in the terrace in front of a house, it creates a presumption that either the owner or the occupant of the premises allowed that to happen. And then if they don't clean it up within three days' notice by the city, we take them to court. We can have them fined if we prove them guilty. And if we have to clean it up, if we give them that three days' notice, the court would then assess the cost of the cleanup against that property owner as a restitution to recover that cost. I'm not very familiar with other communities doing this. They do something analogous with shoveling snow law communities. They require the property owner to shovel the snow on the sidewalk. The city owns, if they don't do it, they find them. So similar is done, but not quite exactly the same thing. One of the dangers right into this, and one of the reasons we don't require property owners to shovel the sidewalks in Belvedere, is sometimes you're dealing with somebody that's physically unable to do it. And in that case, obviously, for example, with this one, we'd probably work with that person, you know, and try and find them a means to get it done, or assist them in doing it ourselves. But this would give us another arrow to try and recover some of the costs of cleanup when they refuse to do it, or be able to point to this and say, it's presumed you put it there. I don't care if you said you didn't do it. You presume you did. One of the changes I might wanna do before first reading, if this passes tonight, I may put in a clause in there that basically, like snow shoveling, doesn't matter if you did it or not, if there's garbage in the terrace and you get notice from the city to clean it up, you shall clean it up. You know, and which would be even perhaps a simple way of doing it, but I might throw that in there as well, and I'll think about that, research that over the next week. So what this does do, though, is it gives a mechanism by which, hopefully, the city can recover some of the costs of the clean activities that we've been doing for the last eighteen years I've been here, when people dump in the right-of-way.
And some of these are not the first time. It seems to be, seems to be a repetitive problem. We know who, we know where they're at. One of them, they had set the garbage out and then threw a bunch of diapers out into the street and onto the terrace, or onto the city property. And quite frankly, the neighbors keep their property up. I don't blame them. And they had called and complained on it, and that isn't the first time. So when we see that, I would like to get it out of there. I wouldn't wanna live next to that. I don't think anybody else here would either, but I think we also need a mechanism that we can put a little bit of bite into it, or teeth into it. And I mean, it isn't a mystery on some of these, this is not the first time, may not be the last, but at least I think this might be a way to start, so.
As drafted, I will warn you that because it just creates a presumption, if a property owner comes in court trying to defend this and raises their right hand, said, I didn't do it, I don't know how the judge will rule. You know, 'cause I'd have no real proof they did it, it just creates the presumption. So that could be an issue, and one reason why I might wanna make that change to the ordinance I was contemplating. One of the things we have done, actually, we haven't done it, we contemplated doing, but I don't think it ever happened, was there was a lot of illegal dumping going on in the alley behind, gosh, help me, Kip, where was that, where all that dumped, over by the community building? And we contemplated taking either one of the police department's cameras, or even just a game camera from, gone by a game cam, we had one installed out by the shelter at the park a while back for a while, and put it up there and just see if we can get a picture of whoever's doing the dumping, and enforce it that way. That works with a known area like the alley, but when you're talking about airman houses around town, it's probably not as easy. I would encourage a neighbor, not that I'm asking people to rat out their neighbors, but if you're getting frustrated with your neighbor dumping stuff in the right-of-way, snap a couple pictures and send them down to the Building Department. That would help us a lot in enforcement.
Excuse me, Alderwoman Freeman, then Alderman Porter?
Thank you. So is this going to hold the property owner responsible? Because tenants sometimes do things, but as the property owner, whether they live in Belvedere, whether they live in Chicago, or whether they live in some of their state, they're still collecting the rent and liable for what goes on on that property. And, you know, it's a matter of public record who owns it and their address. So is it the owner of the property that's gonna be notified, and then they have to take it up with their tenant, or they're gonna be fined, or they're gonna have to hire somebody to go clean it up, or they're gonna be fined? That way, it's not just the tenant that is in trouble, I guess?
The answer is yes. If you look at paragraph B as drafted, it makes the owner, the tenant, I said, or any occupant, 'cause I suppose it could be a squatter as well, it makes them equally liable for cleaning up, and they can be fined. Subsection D, which pertains to the three-day notice, we give three days' notice, you got cleaning up. If you don't, we recover the cost from that from you as restitution. That applies to the owner, 'cause quite frankly, if we're gonna give that kind of notice, we often don't know who the tenant is. So that's why it was limited to the owner in that section. But what I've tried to do with a lot of our ordinances of these nature lately is try to get both the owner and the tenant. You know, I'm not a landlord, nor do I ever wanna be, but I know lots of landlords that frankly, just end up with problem tenants, and they do everything they can try to do to control the tenant, and they have trouble doing that. And so if it's possible, we'll try and corral the tenant into getting into compliance. When we don't know who the tenant is, or we can't do that, you're right, the owner's the one that owns that property, and we will chase the owner down, and so this does both.
Thank you. And then that doesn't, that doesn't cover like branches and stuff like that, Danny? So if somebody has branches that come down after a storm, or something in their backyard, and they can drag them out to the front and then call the city, they don't, we don't have to wait for the branch and leaf pickup, right?
No, this does cover, it would be illegal to dump those kinds of items in the right-of-way. It includes debris or rubbish of any kind, which would include yard waste.
Okay, so since we can't burn in the city, so Comcast cut some branches from the wires because squirrels had chewed the wires and left the branches laying there on the terrace, so then what should the tenant, homeowner, whoever do with those branches?
Dispose of them.
They always seem to find their way into our chipper. We do pick up twice a year, and pretty much, we pick up every week. I mean, I think there's all their alternatives. I won't say them here, that'll be up to the brass, but the, we're constantly picking stuff up. You know, they tell us it's storm damage, and you can just see where they just trimmed other hedges, you know? There's time for that two times a year, but they do it at their convenience and expect us to jump at their convenience, and we do, for the most part. And after every sizable storm, we do make the rounds and pick up all the branches. Comcast should have taken those branches with them.
And in all honesty, when Comcast does that, or ComEd, especially when ComEd does, you can look up and see the Y shape to the trees down the entire street, we will know that homeowners didn't do that one. And that presumption, I don't think, would fly in court in that kind of scenario. This is, we're talking really more, all of a sudden, a whole bunch of branches end up in the front yard, and we know Comcast wasn't out there doing it, or the bed mattress, or the bed springs, or the refrigerator, or what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Porter?
Well, just a couple of things here. I just have a little bit of a problem with the making the presumption that the homeowner did it. Like if somebody dumps a couch out in front of your house, then that means you're responsible basically for getting rid of it, which means you have to pay for your garbage company to take, 'cause they don't normally take things that have large value, paying extra. And also, like I, I think we maybe, might wanna not do a three-day thing, maybe give them a week or so, because like I put a box spring out one time, and my garbage company, for some reason, didn't take it that week, maybe it didn't fit on the truck or something, so I had to call them, and then they came back the next week and picked it up the next week, so it was out there for a week, so, you know, we might have to allow for that.
I think for the most part, I think we're reasonable. I know I've seen items appear, actually, I saw one of them come out the door and get placed into the terrace, and it's still there, and it's been three weeks, so there's, there's not gonna be any garbage. The garbage, they're not gonna pay to have it removed. They're hoping that probably somebody would come and have a use for it, and when they don't, then they leave it. So I think it's a reasonable assumption that whenever they put like furniture out and they throw, or they throw just garbage, they dump garbage, they dump. In the one case that really, was really, I thought, upsetting or disrespectful, they had taken garbage with diapers and food and what have you, and just dumped it out in the street like it's a third-world country. And it didn't happen once. It happened after the Street Department, I'd asked them to go pick it up, and then low and behold, it happened again. And I doubt very much if people drive around and look to take advantage of somebody, especially if they don't know if they're watching or not, somebody's watching with cameras and what have you, that they're gonna take a chance on just dumping something out on somebody else's property. I think for the most part, that these individual, the individuals that at least I've seen are not responsible. I think it's unreasonable, and I think that this potentially gives us a little bit of, you know, if they wanna call the bluff, if they wanna go before a judge and put their right hand up and say that it's not them, they'll also have to run a risk of whether or not it is them or not. So that's one thing, but at least if we have something here that allows us to address that type of thing. Now, what Danny's talking about with the trees, with the tree limbs and Alderwoman Freeman, I agree. You know, for the most part, they end up in the chipper. But by the same token, most people understand that when we have a branch pickup, we announce it, and they're willing to honor that. Sometimes people unreasonable, but we can't treat everybody as if they are, so. Alderman Snow?
So at this point, I'll go ahead and make the motion to amend section ninety-eight dash fifteen of City Belvedere Municipal dash fifteen of City Belvidere Municipal Code as set forth in the memo.
Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Freeman, thank you. Alderman Snow?
And, and I have issues, you know, with a lot of people that just put stuff out there and, and leave it sit, and, you know, I'm, I'm constantly turning in stuff, people on my way to and from work must just hate me, because, you know, I see the TV, I call the TV in, you know, so, um, and, and, and it's too bad the police chief isn't here, 'cause as far as presumption of, uh, who did what, there's stuff called fingerprints, but, it's kind of an ongoing joke with the police chief and I, um, but, you know, so, and I get Alderman Porter's deal about some people dumping a couch in front of somebody's house, I think that happens a lot less than anybody would suspect, and if they do, they should be calling the police from where to get go, not that they're gonna get fingerprints or anything off of that, but it can be documented ASAP that they didn't do it, and then go from there. Um, I think you'll find that the city is reasonable in that regard.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, then, uh, we have a motion and a second, a motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Freeman, any other questions, discussion, Alderman Snow?
So, does this, um, allow us to put lien on the property as needed?
It was really funny, it was actually, my first draft, if I had almost an automatic lien provision, like you see us provide for in the municipal code, for, um, rubbish, debris, demolitions, things like that on the property, and I removed that because of some case law I found involving home municipalities that told the court how they had to process things like that, and I thought, eh, this one's walking the line close enough, I don't know if I wanna go there. Yes, we can still get a lien, um, effectively, if we go to court with it, when the court awards that judgment, it can become a lien, I could put it on the house, it also allows the court, however, to, if the defendant doesn't pay the fine, the fines, they send it to collections, and they tack on thirty percent, so, um, I took that provision out, yes, we can still get a lien, it'd be a judgment lien that we'd record with the recorder's office.
And so what does happen to individuals, as far as giving them a citation, particularly the, um, tenants, that be it, what are the ramifications of them paying or not paying? What, what is the deal there?
I don't know if I wanna say this publicly, um, we, 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 we require them, no, um, the, uh, it, it's not as easy as it used to be to get the money, in one sense, it's easier for me, because they have a collection agent do it all now, and so it all goes to that collection agency, and frankly, from, I've heard they're doing a very good job of collecting on past due fines and things like that. In the old days, if somebody didn't pay their fine, and the judge found they could've, they put them in jail until they pay the fine, that's long gone, you don't do that anymore. Um, so, frankly, it's sent to collections, and the collection agent tries to collect it. They used to put a hole in your license if it was a traffic ticket, that doesn't even happen much anymore, um, in fact, they just changed the laws on that, so, it's easier to get away without paying your fines now than it used to be, but, uh, our collection agents doing a pretty good job of it.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, uh, so we have a motion and a second to amend section ninety-eight dash fifteen of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code, uh, as set forth below, this will come back in ordinance form, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, and then with that being said, uh, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss specifically two C, two collective bargaining matters between the public body and its employees or representatives, do we have a motion that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, do we have a second by Alderman Porter? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we need a roll call, uh, clerk will call the roll.
Barrington?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.